Um, I'm gonna call the meeting of the.
Hi boss, yes, tha- that's really a historic term.
Yeah, it's a Brooklyn term.
I think it's an Ohio turn.
No, whatever. Anyway, calling to order the. January third, twenty twenty four, alphabetical roll call, who's here?
Clark Brewer is here.
Tom Callahan is here.
Amy Glassmore is here.
Kevin Hines, present.
Yedder Hobson's here.
Okay, and we also are joined by Town Planner Cassandra Thayer and Town Council Carolyn Murray, welcome. Alright, so the first item on our agenda is two. Which I believe wants a continuance.
That is correct, until February seventh.
So could I have a motion to continue to February seventh at six thirty?
Motion to continue, uh, to Pleasant Street till the February seventh, twenty twenty four.
At six thirty. Alright, who in favor?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Kelly and I.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
Kevin Hines, aye.
Yedder Hobson, aye.
Alright then. Herman's is here, we'll go to ninety eight one oh four Howard Gleason Road. It's a common driveway application.
I believe Attorney Delisi will be presenting, I also have, um, Pat Brennan, the peer review for this as well.
Alright.
Uh, and Jeff, if you need anybody else, just let me know.
Um, can I, uh, ask a point of information? In light of the fact of the way this, uh, A and R is going to be discussed. It will be important because we have.
Not an A and R.
The common driveway.
This is a common driveway.
Well. Okay.
The A and R is the next one.
Okay, uh, I got the term wrong, I, I meant to say the common driveway.
Okay.
And when, well, we, was there an A and R on this project when we had to freeze the? Conditions back in twenty eighteen? Wasn't that what started all of this?
Amy, are you directing your question to me?
I, I'm actually.
We'll probably get into that as the application, um, is described and, and discussed.
Okay, so tha- then I want to continue what I was going to say. In light of the fact that we have at least two new members on the board. It's going to be important that whoever describes the process explains it in relationship to the way in which the project evolved and be very precise about it because this is not something that we have, I've seen before, and I think we want to be very careful about it. Thank you.
Alright. With that said, Jeff, welcome, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, um.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Everybody, Carmen.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what did I, what did I do now?
We, we haven't actually opened the public hearing yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, sorry.
Yeah, just a small technical. Cassandra, do you mind reading the notice?
Um, Carolyn, if you recall, I had reached out to you many weeks ago now, um, to ask you if this was an official public hearing and your opinion was that there was not a public hearing, um, and it did not need to be advertised.
Alright, well, I might, we should still make some sort of announcement to the public, what the project is that we're talking about, so they know.
For the better of the public, we're dealing with a common driveway application, the property at ninety eight one oh four Howard Gleason Road.
Point of, uh, information, could you say a little bit more about this? Because it's not something that's a regular situation in which we have, have going back in twenty eighteen and dealing with twenty twenty four.
Amy, if you were there in twenty eighteen and you, I mean, I'm looking at the agenda, it says it's a common driveway application, that's what I'm announcing, if you want to add to it, be my guest.
I just reiterate that it is going to be important that it be described very carefully because we have not addressed a situation exactly like this while I've been on the board.
Alright. Let us proceed. Jeff, go ahead.
Okay, great, Attorney Jeff Delisi, I'm with Orenberger Delisi and Harris here in Situate. Carmen Hudson is part of our team and she should be in the queue somewhere, if you can promote her, Cassandra, that'd be great. So. I, um, I, I think I'll start out, uh, trying to kind of go backwards and see if I could address Amy's, uh, you know, uh, her point, that it's, it's probably necessary to, to describe that. But it just at the outset, before I do that. I just want to say that, uh, notwithstanding the zoning freeze, which I could get into, uh, for the board's benefit tonight, uh, the plan that was, uh, proposed, the common driveway plan, which is in front of the board this evening. Um, was designed to meet the existing common driveway requirements. And the only real difference that I could see, um, between the old bylaw and the new bylaw, so to speak. So long as we meet those requirements is the di- difference and distinction between, um, a permit, which is what was uh, required previously by majority voter of the board, and a special permit, which is what is, um, what the current bylaw language reads, so.
How many lots are being serviced by this?
Uh, four total, there's, there's one lot has a house on it existing, so Carmen will get into that.
That exceeds the new bylaws, so that's. That's, that'll need to be addressed.
Okay, um, okay. So. Uh, I guess it was, what, prior to COVID, two thousand nineteen or seventeen, I had indicated, I sent a letter to the board. The applicant, um, along with a couple of other of my clients, petitioned the, the planning board for a definitive, um, subdivision approval for properties which they own in Cohasset. This particular applicant owns this property on Howard Gleason Road. And, um, what the, what the concept is with the zoning freeze is that if a, a, if an application is filed for a definitive subdivision plan and that application, um, uh, is heard by the planning board and the planning board um, finally endorses a subdivision plan approval. Then all of the land shown on the plan is what the, is, is what we commonly refer to as is frozen. So basically, um, it's a device that the state of Massachusetts, um, has you know, set forth in statutory law, which says that property owners can do this. So back, uh, prior to COVID, when we, uh, petitioned the board. We were very upfront with the planning board, that what we were seeking to do was to, uh, create a subdivision plan, which, um, which essentially, we never intended to build. And that the whole purpose for the exercise was to freeze, uh, the zoning bylaw, which was in place at the time. And so, um, the letter I had provided you with last, I think it was last week, might have been the week prior. Um, set forth the statutory criteria and the timeframe. But suffice to say, the, um, zoning was, was in fact frozen. Uh, as of the date of the submission of that definitive, uh, plan, which actually I think now that I'm talking was in the year two thousand and eighteen. So the zoning that was in, in effect in two thousand and eighteen was frozen. And, uh, the freeze pursuant to state law lasts for a period of eight years. And so, um, that is the backdrop under which we're coming in this evening. Uh, the, the, the zoning bylaw, uh, um, was amended, uh, to uh, to change some of the, um, common driveway provisions. And, uh, and that particular language, um, uh, would, uh, would not apply in the case of a zoning freeze situation. So, um, this application is a common driveway application uh, being made to the planning board for the property shown on the subdivision plan that was approved. Um, and the standards and provisions that were in effect in two thousand and eighteen zoning bylaw would apply to this circumstance. And at the time, I, I recall, I know Clark was on the board, Amy was on the board, Tom, I think you, you may have been on the board at the time. Say again?
I wasn't.
Okay, um, a town council was involved in that discussion, which at the time I think might have been to Murphy Hess, to me and LaHane, it was, it was not Carolyn, uh, Carolyn's office, so. That's the backdrop, here we are today, Carmen has attempted to, um, design a circumstance that, um, she believed complies with, uh, with the current zoning bylaw. Uh, notwithstanding the zoning freeze situation, so every attempt was made to honor, honor, uh, honor, honor the current, the current bylaw. Um, so this property and, and Carmen can, can get into it, but this property was, um, that what, what the plan is showing is, is, is a common driveway, which would serve as four lots. One of which is, uh, already an existing single-family dwelling. And the other three lots, which are currently, uh, vacant. There is no A and R approval that's being requested because the lines of division have already been endorsed by the planning board. Um, prior to the zoning freeze, it was, you know, I want to say maybe two thousand sixteen or thereabouts. I could probably find the, the, uh, A and R plan that was endorsed, but I know it's on file in your office. So this is just a straight up common driveway application, and Carmen can get into the, to the plan.
Carolyn, I'm gonna put you on the spot, is this appropriate use of the freeze? If they're not doing the subdivision? I think this, this, this doesn't pass the smell test, I mean.
Oh, no, it, it, it certainly does, I mean, it, you know, there are, this is one of those loopholes that is available statutorily to any property owner, and we see this a lot when towns start talking about potential zoning amendments. Folks will come in and they'll file a perimeter plan, an A and R plan, a subdivision plan, with no intentions of doing anything other than preserving the zoning in place for those, for the land shown on that, um, plan. Because they're afraid of what the zoning change may bring, or what impact that may have. I, I do, just if I may, Mr. Chair, though, circle back, you know, I agree with Attorney Delisi that based on what he laid out in his letter, that if the planning board endorsed a definitive subdivision plan in April of two thousand and nineteen, you get an eight-year zoning freeze from that point. And it would appear that the, um, subdivision application was filed in two thousand and eighteen, so it would be the two thousand and eighteen zoning bylaws in effect. But then, I, I just heard Jeff say something about an A and R plan. And I don't know if, if that was, if you misspoke, we then have a subsequent A and R plan.
No, no, um, the, the lineage of this was that there was an A and R plan presented to the planning board prior to the submission of the definitive plan. Uh, and that A and R plan was endorsed by the planning board. Thereafter, the, uh, definitive subdivision freeze plan was filed. And, uh, just Carolyn, just to clarify how I read the statute, and we could of course go over this, we're certainly within the eight-year timeframe. Was that the freeze applies, the eight years starts to accrue from the date of endorsement. Which was, which was in two thousand and nineteen, I believe. And, and the freeze applies to the zoning bylaw, which was in effect at the time of the submission of the plan.
Which is two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, so I think that the freeze is applicable uh, uh, for all the way up to sometime in two thousand and twenty seven. And that was, that was laid at eight years from the two thousand and nineteen date, and yeah, and that was laid out in my letter.
Okay, I just didn't want to make sure that there was a subsequent A and R plan that changed anything, because obviously that's got a different freeze period.
Yep.
But, but otherwise, Mr. Chair, I, in answer to your question, I, I agree that the, um, zoning freeze appears to be in place here.
Um, so may I ask, um, a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so for those that were not in, uh, on the board at the time. What that means is, and it's delineated in Mr. Delisi's letter, that there was a set of standards for the, uh, common driveway that are effective back in time. And so we're not talking about a situation in which this case is going to be debating current common driveway standards. And that's a point that we could have a conversation about in terms of negotiation, I think. Um, but it's important that those who were not on the board understand that.
And, and just, just to add to that, that's a hundred percent correct, Amy. Um, a- as Carmen, as Carmen goes through the plan with the board, I'm gonna ask Carmen to indicate to the board any areas where she understands the plan deviates from the prior. Uh, so in other words, any deviation between the zoning bylaw that was in effect in two thousand and eighteen and the current bylaw. If, if you could point any deviation out, that would be fantastic, thank, I think that would be very instructive to the board and understanding as we move forward.
Of course, if, if I may. Present the plans.
Yeah.
Thank you, Carmen Hudson from Merrill and De Nier. Um, let me share this with you, just because, um, as, oh, and I'm sorry, um, could I possibly share the screen, please, Cassandra? So, uh, these are the current, uh, common driveway requirements. Uh, it allows up to four detached family dwellings to be served by the common driveway. It requires them to have their own frontage, now it requires them to have fourteen feet of width, of paved width. And relocated within a twenty-foot wide easement, no longer than seven hundred and fifty feet, there are other requirements. Let me just show you what the previous requirements were and the age of them, just so that um, things don't seem, you know, alien, because they really are not. And can you see this, uh, page that is common driveway minimum standards of the planning board? Or should I?
But we can't see the dates of the revisions.
Yes, so you see the dates. So the, the common driveway regulations that you are familiar with, that were in place up until November. They haven't changed since twenty eleven, so you are familiar with the old common driveway regulations. And, uh, really, for our case, the common driveway regulations that were you know, occurring up to November were more stringent, because they required for, were proposing for houses to be served by this common driveway. And the old, uh, regulations called for a fifteen-foot paved width instead of fourteen. And it required a forty-foot easement, now it's only twenty feet. So if, if I'm, so after having just gone through that quickly, if I may show you what we are proposing. So. What we are proposing, and I'm sorry, I know, I, I normally go through existing conditions before I go to propose, but just to make it clear as far as the regulations are concerned and to show a visual to what Jeff was mentioning. We are proposing a fifteen-foot wide paved driveway that is going to be located in an easement that goes from fifty feet in width over here to forty-five, to a forty-five-foot radius cul-de-sac here. So this easement, where the common driveway will be located, is much wider than what the requirement was before and what the requirement is now. And also the, the paved driveway that we are proposing is going to be fifteen feet in width. Which is compliant with, with what the requirements used to be. And it's more, it's wider, so it's fifteen feet instead of fourteen feet, which is what the requirement is today. So that, that's why what we're proposing is compliant to both the old regulations and the new regulations. Um, also the, the A and R that Jeff had mentioned, that was in twenty seventeen, actually. And as you can see, the four lots have their own frontage, so that's one, two, three, four lots, they have their own frontage, and the driveway is located within the frontage of one of those lots. So, so this common driveway as shown really would qualify for both, but it happens to enjoy a zone. So if I just, uh, may go through the normal my normal presentation, so let me go over the existing conditions.
Can you, can you shrink the, the image a little bit so we can see the entire space? Uh, we're losing the top.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you see the plan?
Now it's been enlarged.
Okay. Like this?
Correct, great.
Okay. Okay, so, um, as you can see, this, this four lots have their own frontage. Again, this was an, uh, approved thing in A and R in twenty seventeen. Uh, this lot, uh, has been developed for decades. Um, but this, this house was, is new, so this was redeveloped. There is this driveway that used to serve this old house with a detached garage, now it's a new house. Uh, this is a twelve-foot wide paved driveway that goes all the way to the back. Serves the, the dwelling, the new dwelling and the garage. And as you can see, that the pogafrif goes up, so that the road is down low, the yacht club is across the street. There is an extensive system of wetlands on the side, from here over to the front. It drains towards, uh, there's a culvert under Howard Gleason Road, and it drains towards Cohasset Cove. Uh, the wetlands from here over to the back, uh, drain towards, uh, Cohasset Harbor. So, right now, there is only one developed lot with one long driveway, it's about five hundred and thirty feet to this point from the road, and the remaining three lots are undeveloped, but they are buildable lots, legal building lots. So this is, this is the lot layout, once again, one, two, three, four lots. And this is the proposed common driveway easement, as I mentioned, is going to be fifty feet wide in this, in this area. Right now, the requirement is twenty, before it used to be forty, over here is forty-five feet, and this is a forty-five-foot cul-de-sac. Now, we're not proposing to pave a cul-de-sac, it's just simply the way that easement is. So this is what the proposed work is. So what we're proposing is to locate the, the new fifteen-foot wide, um, common driveway over the twelve-foot wide existing paved driveway, so it will be wider near fifteen feet. However, something that we're doing in order to be able to control stormwater is we're, we're raising the grade of the road. So. We are proposing this paved driveway to be fifteen feet in width. It's going to have a one-foot paved culvert, which is just a, a one-foot wide curb that goes up only three inches in the back. And then it's going to have a one-and-a-half-foot, um, gravel shoulder all around the driveway. Instead of proposing a cul-de-sac here, there are very, there are large areas of, uh, exposed ledge. And they're very, very tall, the elevations are, are high. Uh, so we're trying to avoid going over ledge as much as possible, we're actually going to be covering a bit of the ledge with the grading. So as you can see, what we're proposing here is a hammerhead, so that, uh, fire apparatus could come and turn around and then go back out. So the common driveway itself, it's going to be about five hundred feet from the street to here. And as I mentioned, it's going to be, uh, fifteen feet in width as far as pavement is concerned. We are proposing a catch basin over here, which is going to drain to this infiltration system. And then we're proposing another catch basin over here, which is going to drain to this infiltration system. So there's going to be still a, a small section of the driveway that is going to be, uh, shedding towards the road, which is untreated. However, that is much less than the driveway, which was again about five hundred and thirty feet from here, that was going in this direction and treated. Uh, we are going to have to go to the conservation commission for stormwater permit and a notice of intent. Um, so, um, uh, let me see, I don't, I think, I think, uh, this would be sufficient as far as the, the idea of what the proposed work will be. Um, I know if Pat, you would like to mention anything, uh, I would be happy to answer any, I know that we had a conversation over your, your comments, but if, if there are any questions that you would like me to address.
Alright. Yedder, go ahead.
Um, just out of curiosity, Carmen, um, I'm gonna be very honest, I'm a member of the yacht club. And, uh, we have had now in the last two years, serious, what we call king tides or high tides. Where that entire parking lot, pre the gray, gray house on Howard Gleason Road that the yacht club owns and the road up to the barn that is yacht club owned, completely flooded, you cannot get a car through. It is salt water, it's not brackish water, it's salt water. It is a full high tide that floods to that driveway. I'm just curious how that plays into this whole plan.
Unfortunately, as far as the, the tide is concerned, and that's, that's been a problem. Well, that's been a problem since I've been working here in the two, you know, early two thousands. Um, this area of Howard Gleason always floods, there's a culvert right here, that culvert that goes to the head wall, that goes to where the yacht club is. Uh, is flooded most of the time, you know. Um, so what we were trying to do is to reduce flow, but we're talking about stormwater first, that's fresh, that's rainwater. You know, so we're not making it worse, but when there's a tide. There's a tide, you know, it, it's within the flood plain, so we're going to need to go in front of ZPA as well, but unfortunately, there's nothing we could do, other than, other than raising the entire road. There's really nothing that can be done to prevent the tide from going over the ground.
Can I just add one more thing? Byway, the existing driveway that, that is there now is made of tarmac. It's not a, it's not a surface that allows water to flow through it. So it actually is forcing water back into what I call the wetlands immediately to the right of that driveway. There is a tremendous amount of wetlands, wetlands that was cut down by the owner originally. That caused problems, and I'm just curious, but if, if this is gonna be the existing driveway that's there now begins to be the shared driveway, if I'm understanding correctly, it should not be tarmac. That's gonna cause an additional amount of water to build up, I'm just curious what you're thinking on an engineering point.
So what we did, uh, uh, once again, because we know this is a problem, the end of Howard Gleason. And as far as the tide is concerned, there is really nothing within our power to do. Uh, however, for stormwater, uh, what we did was we created these low points. So you know how we increased, so we, we heightened the road, and we created this this low place here, which is for, uh, to, to install a catch basin here. The reason why we had to put this much fill was because whenever we have a catch basin, it's a deep-sung catch basin. So you're talking about having the, the grate, the frame, they have the deep sum, and then the pipes have to have cover. So we could not just, you know, keep the grates the way they were. So we are sending now all of the, the runoff that comes in this direction. Now we're capturing it here and sending it here with an overflow pipe. Uh, let me just show you, the overflow pipe for that, uh, is over to the side, let me go to the previous page. So we are breaking up, and, and once again, I'm talking about rain, freshwater runoff. You see how we're sending the water from this infiltration system over here? You see how we're sending the water from this infiltration system over here? So we're sending it to the back. So this is not, anything that happens from this catch basin upward is not going down to Howard Gleason anymore, it's going to the back. And then, what we have coming for between this catch basin and this catch basin is getting caught here by this catch basin and sent over here to the, this infiltration system. So we're trying to send to the ground as much as possible. And we're not only doing that, we're also sending the overflow pipe from all of this to the back. So we are making things, uh, you know, better, but this is for freshwater. And I absolutely agree that as far as the tide is concerned, that is a problem, but that is not something unfortunately that we can, you know, remediate. Uh, it would be something that really the town would have to remediate by raising the whole project.
Alright, um, Amy, can, can we get to Patrick first? Is that alright?
That's fine.
Alright, Patrick, your thoughts, please.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Pat Brennan, uh, I peer reviewed the project for the board. Um, a couple of things, I, I did submit a letter last week with a number of comments. Um, Carmen and I did have a conversation today about my letter, and I know that she's working on addressing those comments, but I'll just kind of hit some of these. Just so you know what the concerns are. Uh, I, I would agree with Carmen that the, the runoff flow toward Howard Gleason from this driveway will not be increased as a result of this project. It'll be decreased because of the stormwater system that they are proposing. Um, a couple of, um, one thing that I noted in my letter was that they are requesting a waiver, and I believe it's from the old, um, common driveway regulations, which required a two and a half inch crown in the center of the driveway. As Carmen mentioned, they are super elevating this roadway, so there, there will not be a crown on it. All going to be sloped to the, um, as you're looking at that page, that you're looking at, to the top of the page, to get it to those two catch basins that she had, um, pointed out earlier. When I was going through this, I, I, you know, one of my questions was exactly where the existing and proposed easements are. I think Carmen kind of explained that, you know, fifty-foot wide easement coming up, and then it, it turns into a basically a forty-five foot wide easement as you make that bend there. Um, so I, I think that's, it's a little bit more clear to me now. Um, my, my next comment had to do with the infiltration systems. Um, while the common driveway with, is within easement, within the easement, those infiltration systems are not. So I believe that they're going to need easements around those infiltration systems. Um, because they will be on private property. Um, my next comment was in relation to the typical roadway section. I'm just asking that they show the pavement and gravel under the cape cod burns and the gravel shoulders that they're proposing. Um, there were just some, some discrepancies in the, in the hydrocad, um, analysis uh, as it related to impervious areas. Um, Carmen and I discussed that today, and I, I, she's working on correcting that, but the, the lower numbers that I, uh, list in my letter are the correct figures. Um, my next, uh, comment was about the storage in one of the infiltration systems, and she's going to make those, that revision. Um, my next comment was about the, the inspection ports on those systems. I asked that they'd be a minimum of six inch diameter. Typically, when we see these, a lot of people specify a four-inch diameter inspection port. When you're trying to look down a four-inch pipe down into one of these systems, it's really difficult to really see anything. So a six inch really makes a lot easier to, to see and actually be able to get some type of backdoor truck down in there to clean it out if, if necessary. Um, my next comment was in relation to how the, the systems are set up with manifold pipes and so forth. And I just made some suggestions on how to maybe improve that situation. Um, and I believe Carmen, uh, is going to make those changes. Um, the, the next comment is about in their construction period operation, stormwater operation and maintenance plan, um, and construction sequencing, they do mention a, a stabilized construction entrance. I just asked that they show the location of that and detail it on the plan. Um, I also suggest that they specify inlet protection for the catch basins, both any existing catch basins that are in proximity to the project, as well as the new catch basins once they're installed and prior to, um, stabilization of the site. Um, my next comment was in relation to manholes for the sewer. Uh, Carmen's gonna work with the sewer department on that, because I believe it's a force main, so they may not need sewer manholes for that. And then my, my last comment in the letter was about, um, specifying the size and type of the water main, because I'm assuming that the fire department is going to want to hide it up at the end of the common driveway to, um, to assist in firefighting for those proposed lots. Uh, one thing that I, I did not include in my letter, and I meant to was, and Carmen and I can talk about this further offline, um, the two catch basins on the road, because it's fairly steep slope, I, I would recommend cascade-type grates and perhaps double grate catch basins, just to make sure that you can capture that runoff coming down the road. Um, you know, have a better chance of capturing it rather than it falling right over the top of the grates. Um, so that, that wasn't in my letter, but I will, um, obviously relay that again to Carmen after this hearing. But those were my comments at this point, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Alright, I'll go to the board. Amy, sorry, your hand up, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so I have a number of questions, and, um, uh, Patrick actually touched on a number of them, which I was really glad to see in his report. The first thing, uh, this is sort of a philosophical statement, or maybe it's just a statement of what's the expectation of the tools we use to estimate what happens when we're working, um, with soil and water. And my understanding is that while we put in chambers to uh, uh, control water supply, in the end, we're regulating to performance, we're not regulating to a model. And that may be, sound like a subtle difference, but we have to think of this, this is a particularly complex environment. We have to think about it as what's the likelihood that this is actually going to work when, um, the, uh, design is implemented, and what are the alternatives, and what are, what are the, the, the consequences of it not working? So rather than thinking it's going to work, let's say it doesn't work, what are gonna be the consequences of that? The second thing I, um, I'm interested in is the hammerhead. And I'm, I'm kind of struggling to try to figure out where you're gonna put three additional houses on this property, given its topography and given it's being surrounded by wetlands. So that's a question that I'd like to hear about, and I want to understand how the hammerhead comes into play when you're gonna be putting three additional houses, um, on the property. Um, another point is that, uh, while it's really appreciated that the, the width of the road is going to be fifteen feet rather than fourteen feet, wouldn't a sixteen-foot, um, wide road, which gives you enough room for two lanes, wouldn't that potentially, given that you're raising it, wouldn't it could potentially act as some kind of a barrier? And, and is a barrier a positive rather than a negative? Um, and even if it adds to costs. Another item is maintenance, uh, who's gonna maintain this, uh, configuration? And we, you know, if it gets flooded or gets eroded, there's gonna have to be some kind of, uh, you know, jurisdictional control over the management of this. Otherwise, it's gonna be very difficult to, uh, live there very long. Um, I noted that there needs to be a fire hydrant there, and I was wondering where that would get placed. Um, I also was wondering how the water main's gonna come into play in terms of, uh, all of the other activities that are going on and where it's gonna be, um, mo- most openly sighted. And, um, I appreciate Patrick's recognition that the water, the slope of the property is sufficiently steep enough to generate water that could simply roll over the, the, the covers of, of the basins, and, and whether or not there's either a need for a bigger ba- basin or another basin, eh, eh, or a, another, um, uh, um, engineering solution to be able to capture as much water as possible. Um, and, and I guess as, as a, my, my last comment is, in a situation like this, where we already know that we have a hazard, we already know that the hazard has potential to be um, disabling for people who have properties and for people who ha- who have, use, um, uh, something like the, the yacht club. How do, you know, do we have ways of modeling this to, to estimate what the consequences are so we can get closer to a, an optimal outcome? Are, are we just basically gonna just use paper drawings and estimates of calculations when this is already a hazardous area?
Thank you.
Jeff, do you want to address any of that before I go to the other board members?
Uh, thank you for giving me that opportunity, Tom. The only aspect of what Amy indicated that I could address as a lawyer is the question of, uh, who would maintain it? And I, um, that, what we would be doing is setting up an association, um, which typically what, in cases like this, what occurs is that there's usually, if there's an approval, a condition of approval that requires that the document that governs the association be acceptable uh, with town council, or at least reviewed with town council. So I would expect that the board would want that, and if there's any particular requirements, uh, which the board might want to be placed into that document, um, certainly that's discussion topic, and we're, we're happy to work with the town on that. Um, as far as any of the other issues, um, which were quite a bit, uh, I think, I think, um, you know, those are engineering questions. Uh, I'm not sure if they're gonna be addressed tonight, or we're not, I'm, I'm sure they won't be. Um, but we're taking copious notes, and I'm sure that Carmen's gonna collaborate with Pat to try and address, you know, your, your, your questions and your issues.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, um, anybody else on the board have something they'd like to add?
Yeah, Clark, um, my, my video, um, my camera seems to be on the fritz, but I am here. Um, so.
What a shame, we can't see.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad, because I didn't, I didn't fancy up for the meeting. Um, well, my, my comment is, uh, the common driveway is a, a fairly simple, um, uh, review task for the planning board. And I think the applicant's engineer has done a, a very thorough job in outlining how it, um, wha- what's proposed, uh, exceeds the requirements, the new requirements, as well as what could have been, um, the, the, um, the previous round that, um, was in effect up until a couple of months ago. Um, it, I, I, so I, I think that the applicant's done a, a, a good job at, um, detailing, and what, what I see there seems to be addressing all the significant issues of the common driveway. It's basically a replacement of an existing driveway. And, um, I, I also think that our peer review has done an excellent job at, um, bringing up points and, and trying to negotiate with the, um, with the applicant's engineer uh, to the extent that, that's, that's reasonable and possible, um, to get the best possible um, engineered solution to this common driveway. But I would say, um, so far, so good.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, you have anything? I don't, so.
Yeah, I appreciate the presentation and the efforts of the, um, applicants, um, to, um, holistically look at this and be open to, um, improvements. And I just wanna ask, um, um, Carmen, can you put your figure up and kind of just circle that area that's subject to coastal flooding on a regular basis? Circle that part of the, the plan with your cursor or with a line, so I can see that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was muted, just, just one second, please.
And I, I guess I just, the reason I ask is I'd just like to be clear where it is on the drawing. And, um, the environments around it, you know, I, I suspect there's, there's no improvements to the environments around it. And so typically what happens when we have this coastal inundation to an area such as a driveway or a paved surface, which you're drawing your cursor around, or you will.
Yes, so can you see the, the plan?
Yes.
Okay, so the, when there is, when there is a king tide, when there is tidal flooding, it comes up to elevation ten. So elevation ten is, comes up here. And it encompasses all of these wetlands. That is why these wetlands are wet, you know.
Okay, so the point, the point I'm, I'm interested in, and you did, you, you showed me where the ten goes up. It goes up a good, um, is there a scale there? Can you give me a footage to where it tees out on the, um, on the road, on the other road it joins there? What's that a good, how many feet is that?
As far, as far as speed, uh, it's about two hundred feet.
Okay, so there's two hundred feet on both sides of that road, subject, I'm sorry, on both sides of this driveway that your, your client is making an application for, that's gonna be subject to regular tidal inundation. My concern is with the, go ahead.
It's just not ti- it's not tidal inundation, it's not, so it's not with every tide?
No, I understand.
Okay.
I understand, um, some people call it king tide, so there's different names for it. They're happening on a monthly, bi-monthly, more frequent basis, especially in the environment that we know we're all headed towards over the next several decades, okay? It's out there, it's happening. You go on the other side of the harbor over at the sailing club, okay? There's a retaining wall over there, and that's not holding back the ocean, and the tide comes over that wall and inundates an area on the lawn between the sailing club and that wall, okay? It's not an issue until the tide comes in. Same thing here. My point is, is there's gonna be about two hundred feet on both sides of this driveway, subject to this inundation, tidal inundation, okay, on occasions without a storm that are gonna need to be maintained. I just wanna know, and you don't have to have an answer for me here, what you guys can do to maintain that? Because what typically happens is you get pitting and erosion on both sides of an improved surface or a reinforced surface, like the road, the, the, not the road, the driveway you would be putting in here, and then on both sides of it, you can get wash, washouts, you can get runoff, you can get pitting, you can get subsidence. Um, you get dead vegetation, because most of the vegetation around here doesn't like the side, the saline solution that comes in with the tides, okay? So what can be done to mitigate that, those areas along the two hundred feet or, or so, plus or minus on both sides of this road to maintain its condition and appearance?
Okay, so, um, just, I just want to point out that as far as the, the king tides are concerned, uh, you can see, you can see what it does right now by looking at the driveway, because there, there's an existing driveway exactly where we're proposing the new driveway to be. So you're, you're looking at the existing twelve-foot driveway, we're going to make it three feet wider than that, and then put, uh, you know, cape cod burns, one-foot cape cod burns at each end. So really, what happens beyond is going to stay the same. What we're doing here, uh, is just making the wider, uh, the, the pavement wider. We are establishing the, by putting the cape cod burns, we're, we're directing the runoff to stay there instead of going to the sides, which is what happens now, because there's nothing. Right now, there are no, um, curbs or cape cod burns. Uh, then we have a one and a half foot gravel shoulder on i- on either side. So that is, you know, further protection for the roof, but however, anything beyond that is going to look just the way that it looks today. Because the tides are going to come, and they're going to go over the lawn and over the, the wetlands, the way that they do today. Uh, you know.
So it doesn't look good now, so it doesn't look good now is what I'm hearing.
Well, it that, have you been to the site? I don't personally, I think it's fine, but.
Guys, can I, I I'm sorry, Ty Ty, we we just seem to be getting way beyond the jurisdiction of a common driveway application. Uh, you know, Concom is going to have to deal with this issue. This is going to be their issue to deal with. All due respect, I just.
It, well, if the applicant's talking about how great this is for surface water, I'm also inclined to hear about how good it will be or won't be with regard to tidal inundation. So if it's outside our purview purview or for to have our peer reviewer provide comment on surface water, then I'll stand down here with a question with regard to other types of water that are going to frequent the area.
All right, I I mean, I'm not trying to, but you know, I just think this is going to fall under Concom's jurisdiction rather than ours, that's all. All right, um, is there any members of the public that wish to be heard on this? Or we have other people out there, but I think that's for another application.
Who is raising their hand and no one is in the Q and A?
I'm sorry?
I was just saying, nobody is raising their hand and no one is in the Q and A.
Do I hear that we're continuing this, that we're not ready to make a decision tonight on this? That's what I'm gathering. There's still some issues for Patrick and Carmen to work out.
Yeah, I I think, I think you're correct.
I think, I mean, I'm not trying, I wasn't trying to cut off Kevin, but you know, there are some points that are well taken here. Your common driveway is going to go into an area where potentially be damaged by flood waters. I mean, that part of it would fall within our jurisdiction, I think. How you contain the flood and deal with the flood is more Concom and ZBA's jurisdiction, but uh I I I think those comments should be taken to heart, you know, some ideas thought of when we come back.
Understood.
Okay. Uh, Deirdre?
I just, I agree, uh, Tom, if, I know we talked about either larger catch basins or those specials, Patrick mentioned, you know, additional grates or something that would catch that water. If if we could see those on some plans that we could, you know, have some more um understanding of how, I know, you know, the rainwater's coming much heavier, and I understand Carmen's issue about that it's salt water coming up, but if we have a lot of water and it's it is a hillside, so we do get tremendous amount of floodwater. I've been there with it pouring down, so I do agree with Patrick that maybe we can, maybe if we could see um some of those additional larger catch basins, if it's possible, or uh additional way to trap some of that additional rainwater that's coming down, that would be good.
What are you going to Concom?
We have not filed yet, um, due to the state regulation, we have to make application to the ZBA first. And uh, really, I I kind of wanted to see how, how the plan might change through this process before moving to that process.
All right. Um, I think Patrick's comments and reports should be shared with the other two boards when they get to them, even though they may have their own experts. Uh, Cassandra, I would ask you to do. I would ask you to do that, Cassandra, and share it with the other board, review this as well. Because I I I think his, some of his comments are crossing jurisdictions, um, so between the, between the three boards, so. All right, Amy briefly?
Um, I would uh ask that uh the engineers consider raising the roadbed substantially as a way of trying to lessen the flow of water that's going southeast. Uh, and that's what's going to happen in every community near the ocean. That, I mean, people are building up their roads all over. Hingham has done it, Hull has done it.
Yeah, to cut the road out of the water, but then the built up road becomes a wall, and where does that water back up against that wall?
But that's an engineering problem, but if you you put a road that's flat and you get it covered with saltwater, it's not going to last long.
Anyway, let let let's let the engineers up with that, I think there's pros and cons on both sides of that. All right, Amy, uh, Cassandra, we had a meeting coming up that we didn't have anything scheduled. Um, what what night was that, February seventh, I think?
Um, so you did receive an application uh today for February seventh? Um, but overall, your uh hearing schedule is pretty light moving forward. You don't have many things on the docket.
You guys be ready for February seventh?
I'd have to uh, I'd have to ask Carmen that question.
Um, we we should be able to, yes.
So can I have a motion to continue this hearing and to, whatever it is, this meeting hearing um to February seventh at six?
Looking at the ground, everybody?
Motion to move, uh, have a, the hearing reopened, or it's actually, it's not really a hearing, is it?
What, why is this not a hearing?
It's a hearing.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
The hearing, it's not the one that needed a notice, that's all. But so, motion is to continue the hearing until February seventh at six. Somebody second that?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Clark Brewer, I.
I'm Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Hein, I.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thanks, thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much.
You.
Have a nice, thank you.
Nice pooch.
Um, all right, so I next door to business is in our application for four thirty-three King Street. Is this the next door to the one we just looked at a couple of weeks?
Across the street, I think.
Across, oh, is this, okay.
I have the applicant here and I will pull them forward.
This should be an easy one.
Yeah, is this Solano's property?
Space for a shed.
Hello?
Hello, all right, if you could introduce yourself, name and address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, my name is Damon Lawson, owner, resident, four thirty-three King Street.
Okay. What is it that you have the force to see?
Um, well, it would, I don't know what's easiest or how much detail you want, um, but with um not having a garage, uh, we've been here for five years and trying to find uh space to put things that we have around the house, mowers and and that kind of thing. So we, uh, I I began the idea of wanting to have a shed, so I went and started looking at sheds where they deliver them, drop them, and didn't see anything that I liked in what it looked like, so um. Armed with blind ambition and ignorance, uh, I decided to uh build my own and uh began doing research and uh.
I only laughed because I did the same thing.
Yeah, I, there was nothing I thought that looked good enough to want to have out. And so I don't know if you, our property has a lot of sloping edges and we have our one parking area, I don't know if you can see where I point, but.
Uh, yeah.
Parking area there on the left and then another small parking area on the right, so that this is really the flattest area. It it was already gravel where we could actually put something, so I decided, well, that's a great place for a shed. So I then Googled shed requirements and what I came up with uh was uh some less than two hundred square feet, um, you do not need a permit. So off I went uh building and sawing and um was all the way at the point of, uh, had rented the digger to do the trench for the electrical. And then a man by the name of John Halen pulled up, um, and I did not know that John Halen was, I assumed John Halen was the uh electrical permit person because we had requested a electrician permit to look at the, you know, to okay the dig. So I jokingly said, oh, you must be the electrician person here too. He says, no, I'm the building inspector. We got a phone call about a shed and may I see your permit? And from there, it's been a two month uh journey of um, because I never got a flat survey. When we bought the house, we wanted to get our kids in school so quickly, we had five days to get them in. We we just, we didn't have a flat survey, so I went and had a flat survey done. And as you can see on the diagram.
That's not a shed.
Oh, we're not sure.
Let me, yeah.
We can see your plan.
Yeah, I just, I just put it up on the screen from the town website, um.
Oh, okay, I have one here to share as well, but um.
But let me, let me ask you, we we, the A and R is about subdividing lots, are we moving property lines just to accommodate the shed?
Uh, yes, uh, my friend, neighbor.
I mean, I don't need to know the history of the shed, it's just why are we moving, what, you know, we're here on a subdivision, a type of subdivision, so if I understand this plan correctly, we're moving property lines so that your shed is within your parcel B.
That's right, it gives us the six feet uh setback behind the shed and we're basically just squaring up. And if you look at the lots, how they are, his his property line will actually come up to where my driveway is now, whereas before my property line was sort of in his yard. So I'm giving him that up to where a parking area is, and then he's giving me, you see how the houses are laid out, the trees and the large rock and the fence back there, it looks, it looks like it's my lot, my lot, because I keep things back there anyway. And so we just swapped it, those parcels evenly to accommodate the six foot setback.
All right, you have a shillings here?
Uh, no, um, he signed all of the documents uh for the uh land swap, and uh this is the the survey uh that was done by um a company I hired to do all of the uh CN, CNG or CNR.
Yeah, okay.
To uh accommodate everything.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions? Because this seems fairly straightforward.
No questions.
I mean, the the ordeal of the shed and the permit is one thing, but just moving the lines, it looks like everybody still has the adequate frontage on King Street.
Yeah.
So I, unless anybody on the board has any questions, I'll entertain a a motion with regard to the application.
Make a motion to endorse the A and R as shown.
Amy, am you? Um, thank you. Uh, in terms of the driveway on King Street, on lot for lot or parcel B, there, the line, how how is it, how come the line is straight and then it kind of turns toward the driveway? Does that make any difference?
What are you talking about?
I'm not sure I follow that question.
Parcel B is what's being swapped for parcel A.
What's? Uh, well, we're just there, it's just, we're actually giving them their yard back because my lap, my old property line sort of went into their yard, if you looked at how the old line was. Now we just sort of moved their property line up to where there's a stone wall that divides, or I have gravel to park my, park the cars. So um now this lot line sort of goes back where it visually should. And then visually, the area where my shed is, is just trees and rocks and a fence that runs back behind there that looks like it's part of our yard of how it's laid out.
I guess I I, you know, if you look at the, if you look at the driveway, I presume the driveway, there's a two sided driveway off of King Street for parcel B, is that correct?
Yes, you you drive in and drive out.
Okay, and then if you look on the left side, you see a straight line and then the 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 line sort of tucks in toward the driveway, is that correct? At the bottom?
I don't know, there's just a, there's just a gravel area to the left of the house where we, where we park our cars, because we didn't let our cars in front of the house, so we just park our cars in the gravel lot to the gravel space to the left, which is the only real flat area on the property. It's our par- it's our parking space.
Yeah, no, I I I get that, I guess I'm just trying to figure out why um the line leans toward the driveway where it dead ends at the driveway.
Par- parcel A is being swapped with parcel B. They're both four hundred square feet, it's the hatched areas, the hatched rectangles, that's all they're doing.
Yeah, we're just, we're just swapping.
Okay.
It's only four hundred square feet and they're swapping four hundred square feet with this tri- rectangle with that rectangle.
Yeah, there's just a little line at the bottom and it's extraneous, it is, it's hard to decipher.
All right.
I think I made a motion.
Yes, someone second, second emotion, please.
Second emotion?
Thank you. All in favor to endorsing this A and R plan?
Clark Brewer, I.
I'm Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin Hein, I.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, good luck.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Sorry about that, Deirdre.
That's okay.
All right. Last but not least, we have uh A and R for seventy Black Horse Lane that we have dealt with before. Um, whoever needs to be promoted, I'm up there. Carolyn, I'm going to lead with you if you could just explain where we are with all of this.
Good evening, Chair Callahan, it's Adam Brodsky, can you hear me?
Of course I can hear you.
Happy New Year, everyone. Oh, good.
You project very well, but I was going to lead with Carolyn to give us an overview of where we are with this this matter.
Thank you, I did not hear that as I was uh being added to the meeting.
All right, so Carolyn, you can refresh us a background, you know, if everybody recalls, this was a a proposed A and R which of a a house lot was also splitting off a new lot that has an existing barn structure on it, and we had declined to endorse that. So um we're here back from tonight, this is the mitigation, we have come to a resolution of that. Carolyn, go ahead.
Right, this was part of um the discussions we've had with respect to seventy Black Horse Lane as well as ninety-four Black Horse Lane. And um seventy Black Horse Lane had originally submitted an A and R to you under the existing structures exemption to the subdivision control law, which basically says if there were buildings existing on a parcel before the subdivision control law took effect, the parcel could be divided, leaving each parcel with a building um situated there on, and it would be entitled to endorsement um under the subdivision control law. That was the first attempt, the planning board rejected that. The applicant came back shortly thereafter with a new application, same plan, but new application, and the application sought again endorsement either under the existing buildings, uh, the existing structures exemption to the uh subdivision control law, or in the alternative as a, what I call a conventional A and R plan, meaning a division of a tract of land where each lot has zoning compliant frontage and has access via a way that's, you know, either, um, you know, a way laid out under the subdivision control law or a way laid out prior to the adoption of subdivision control law, or a way that we recognize is open for use by the public. The planning board denied that second A and R plan that led to this litigation. In the context of also considering the subdivision plan for ninety-four Black Horse Lane, we recognized that there was going to be an improvement to a portion of the private portion of Black Horse Lane that was providing some of the access and or frontage to seventy Black Horse Lane. So if you recall, we had um some discussions in executive session about um if the planning board endorsed the subdivision plan for ninety-four Black Horse Lane, which you have, would the board reconsider this A and R plan? And um discussions led to um a consensus with the board where you authorized uh me to, in in consultation with Attorney Brodsky, to file a motion for remand with the land court. Uh, the land court readily endorsed uh the motion for remand and instruct. And instructed the board to reconsider this A and R plan. So you have the A and R plan before you tonight for your consideration for endorsement. With the changed element, or if you will, being the fact that. This private portion of Black Horse Lane will be improved. Over what was originally before you when the board denied this plan. Um, also, one of the things that the board had discussed as a condition of approval. Was that the board, uh, did not want an occupancy permit to be issued. For a new house, you know, seventy Black Horse Lane has an existing house and then. The greenhouse structure that we imagine is going to be either demolished and rebuilt or, um. Or renovated in some way to become its own separate single family house. The board had talked about the fact that they don't want that second single family house. To be occupied until the improvements to black, the private portion of Black Horse Lane. That is part of the commitment of the subdivision for ninety-four Black Horse Lane. Until those improvements actually take place. So that, you know, this, this new house, if you will, a seventy Black Horse Lane will have all of the benefits of a wider. Portion of Black Horse Lane in a, uh, not only wider, but also a paved portion of Black Horse Lane. So the two things before you this evening are to consider the A and R plan. As well as, um, a settlement, uh, agreement that I had drafted and circulated and, um. I know it was late this afternoon, but I know that Mr. Callahan on behalf of J A K LLC did sign that agreement. Um, I think it's important for the board to note that, you know, as a, certainly as a, a show of good faith here that, um. That agreement has been signed. Um, the other thing that the board had discussed was. That as you recall, we had a lot of discussion about this existing structures exemption. And the fact that the board wasn't really comfortable, um, and that the case law that existed was pretty scant. And I know Attorney Brodsky will disagree with me and say that this clearly, uh, falls under the, the Taylor Pembroke case. But quite frankly, until there's a judge sitting on a bench telling us that this fits squarely. Under the Taylor case as opposed to the Sitco case, we won't know the answer to that for certain. Um, but the board wanted to make it clear that its endorsement of this A and R. Would be based on its evaluation. That the lots shown on the plan have adequate frontage, a zoning compliant frontage, which they do. And also that the way provides suitable access, um, to the lots. And with the improvements that are going to be made as part of the ninety-four Black Horse Lane subdivision. I think the board can now feel comfortable, uh, finding that the access is indeed adequate. And again, the settlement agreement makes it clear, we are only endorsing this as a conventional subdivision. We are not. Endorsing this under the existing structures exemption. And with that, Mr. Chair, I will, I will pause in case anyone has any questions.
Any many, many members of the board have any questions about this? I presume you've all seen the agreement. And I think, you know, from my own perspective, I think it accomplishes. What we were looking for and does not establish any precedent, precedent, you know, inverse precedent. Given the position we've taken with the, the existing building exception, um, that we had taken earlier. In this year at another property as well. So, um, I, I'm pleased with the work that Attorney Murray has done here. And I, I think we should go forward with this. Anybody else on the board? And I know we have a member of the public that wants to be heard. So, um. Maybe two. Oh, all right. All right. With not hearing anything, um, Lynn Baranowski of fifty-five Black Horse Lane, he's like to weigh in. So. If you could promote Ms. Baranowski, Cassandra. We also have a comment from Mr. McGoldrick, George McGoldrick, and we'll get to that in a moment.
So, hi, everybody. Um, my name is Lynn Baranowski. Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, great. So, uh, you know, I just wanted to note first, um, I, I live at fifty-five Black Horse Lane. So I'm in the, in the neighborhood. Um, I'm not sure that you're all aware, and I tried to send a letter to you when you were discussing ninety-four Black Horse Lane. But the construction, um, that happened in the last couple of years there was just incredibly disruptive. Um, I had people parking on my front lawn routinely, um, in the wetlands area, I think making a big mess and. Uh, you know, I know that you approved already those two houses that exist. Um, I tried to appeal your decision about ninety-four Black Horse Lane yesterday. Um, I understood that the deadline was yesterday, but, uh, Cassandra informed me it was January first. That was a little bit of a surprise since the January first is a federal holiday. Um, so just wanted you to be aware that I did try to appeal that, as did I think some other neighbors as well. Um, but apparently it was not in enough time. Um, I, I think, you know, primarily my objections. Around this subdivision have to do with the nature of the, of the lane. I don't know if any of you have driven down it, but it's really, you know, a lovely quiet spot. Um, number seventy, I think is an iconic part of Cohasset. Um, and, and I think any additional development there is going to be incredibly disruptive for. The neighborhood, the wetlands, you know, all of us. And I think really has the potential to, to hurt what is, I, I, again, an iconic structure. So I really wish you would, uh, reconsider this.
Thank you for your comment, but, you know, my, my general answer to this would be that. You know, I know that this back part of Black Horse Lane has not been intensely developed for decades. But people have a right to do it and our zoning. You know, this is my pet peeve about our fifty-foot frontage that we switched to in the late sixties for whatever unknown reason. Um, it has allowed these many lots to be developed.
I understand that. I think.
And I, I just, I just. To, I'm not promising you that there'll be a change to that. It's going to be discussed, but, you know, the town gets what it wants with its zoning, you know, and. And we, we did the best we could in the, in a difficult situation because the. Public portion of Black Horse Lane is, you know, woefully underdeveloped compared to modern roadways, but.
Yeah, Tom, I understand that. I don't know if you all understand though, you know, that, that part of the lane, which is where my house is, is the end of the public portion. I own both sides of the lane, as do the Ganey's next door. And that private portion that you're all talking about is just far too small for any trucks to fit down. Which is why when the construction happened in the last couple of years, again, I mean, literally every couple of days, there would be a front end loader parked in my front lawn. So I, I think I, I'm concerned about the ramifications, you know, for my property as well as the wetlands in the area there.
And I appreciate that. And I think we tried to deal with that somewhat in our conditions and. I, 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 you know, I wouldn't be shy about all the appropriate authorities up for trespassing. You got front end longers parked on your lawn. There's no need for that. There's plenty of room where this development is happening for all of that parking to go on. So. I, I don't want, I don't want to get into an extended thing about that, but, uh, you know, um, I mean, we, we, we've. We've heard everyone and we tried to do the best job we could in a difficult situation here, but. You, you know, we can't all hope that things will, land will stay the way it is. And, you know, Massachusetts is not about. Zoning law is not about stopping development. It's about conditioning, uh, really. And, you know, and if our bylaws aren't working for us anymore. And allowing that land like this to be, quote unquote, overdeveloped, then, then let's make a change.
I'd love to. I'd very much support that, Tom. So.
And we, we, we had suburban frontages from fifty-five to sixty-nine. We switched it in sixty-nine. Nobody's here to tell us exactly why. I can guess why, but. I'll, I'll, you know, the guess is that you had to do cul-de-sacs. My street, other streets over here in Beechwood are cul-de-sacs. It's, it's a much more intensive development of land when you have to put in a subdivision room.
Yeah, I understand. And, and I'm going to let other neighbors speak, but I, I hope you're hearing me that it just seems like a real shame to ruin this beautiful part of Cohasset.
I hear you. We do. All right. Let me see who else we have. George McGoldrick, what were you looking for? Please explain what in terms of. Of resolving this? I mean, we, we, we drew our line in the sand on two things with this A and R in denying the application. One, that the private portion of Black Horse Lane was an inadequate road. And number two, that the barn, some might call it dilapidated, whatever it is. Was not a sufficient structure to meet the existing structure exception. And we took that position earlier this year on another property in another part of town as well. Uh, a decision that wasn't appealed as far as I know. So, you know, that, that's where we were, we were drawing the line in the sand and. You know, now because the subdivision was also happening, there is going to be a better road. And it is going to be adequate. And, and we, we called too, that we made the planning board, I, I say we. Different personnel, but the planning board some year, a few years ago, made a decision that allowed an A and R even with that way. And so we were kind of. Had our hands tied by our own, our own precedent. That might've been a mistake in retrospect, but. So, you know, we now have, we're going to have a better road and we're not having. The, this property being made, uh, an exception, you know, to the existing dwelling exception. And it won't get to be occupied, this, this old barn, until it is upgraded to a sufficiently adequate. And livable structure. So I think that's what we were looking for and that's what we've achieved. And to Mr. Sullivan's comment, does this mean the barn can be used as a single family home? I think that is their developer's intent is that. It would be, uh, developed, but it will not be occupied. Until the roadway is of sufficient size and, um, to be ready for it to be occupied. All right. And, uh, let me see, Debbie Shad, I missed the very beginning of the hearing since it started a little ahead of the A P M time in the agenda. I'm confused by the reference to the old greenhouse. There are claim that the greenhouse is a third structure entitled to be developed by right into a house. I thought that this A and R was only for two lots. It is only for two lots.
Yes, Mr. Callahan, Adam Brodsky, and I, I think Attorney Murray may have misspoken. Uh, it was the barn that we're proposing to improve, not the greenhouse.
And did we? Okay. So that answers that, um. Can you clarify, Bernadette Faulkner, can you clarify what we will be voting on tonight? We are going to be voting on the endorsement of the A and R and the acceptance of the settlement agreement. And the A and R will result in the two lots. And, um, could it eventually expand to more lots and houses? Can the two structures be torn down for new bills? Or are you restricting demolition? We are not restricting demolition. We can't do that. We are not, uh, Carolyn, correct me, we're not restricting further subdivision of I D V two lots, correct?
Correct, Mr. Chair. In my opinion, you don't have the authority to do that when it's an A and R plan.
Right. I mean, and again, it goes back to, there is a lot of land up there. We have speculated during the course of the ninety-four hearings that. We, we know there'll be eight house lots up here. Could there be as many as ten? There are other issues. There are wetlands issues. And there's, again, it's because we allow for fifty-foot frontage and because we allow for, you know. Court chop or rat tail lots, as they're called. Um, there's a lot, there's possibilities. I mean, I can't tell you, I don't have a map in front of me to tell you it's, it's, uh, impossible. Or, or whether there'll be, um. There, there'll be, uh, more, uh, houses than, than the eight that we know will be there eventually. So, George McGoldrick wants to ask a question. Please promote him if you could. And then Mr. Sullivan is. Will the sidewalk be made for safety of children? We went through that with the ninety-four subdivision. So, um. We, we are, we are not dealing with a sidewalk here. And that was a waiver that was granted. And, um, too many legal and logistical issues about doing that on the public portion of, of, uh, Black Horse Lane. But we did achieve some mitigation for the ultimate repaving and improvement of the public portion of Black Horse Lane. George, you here?
I, I just got on, but because the way that's, because the way Zoom works. I just, I did not catch the last minute of your discussion.
Just as answering Mr. Sullivan about, and you were here at the conclusion of our hearing on ninety-four Black Horse Lane about. The sidewalks and that they are not going to be signed. All right. So ask your, your, your questions.
So I, I have, uh, Mr. Chairman, I have multiple questions. My first question is. Mrs. Baranowski, who's in a butter for the project, called the planning board yesterday to appeal the project. And was told that it was not, it was too late. Uh, my calendar says that yesterday was actually the date that she could, they could have appealed. Can someone please advise correctly as to what the date was? My, my understanding was the decision went December twelfth. If you add twenty days, that would be January first. If you add the holiday, it's January second, which would have been yesterday. So Mrs. Baranowski, who was ready and had a lawyer ready to appeal. Was told that she could not appeal yesterday because it was too late. Can someone please clarify whether that's correct or not?
Carolyn, did you want to speak to that or I could speak to that?
Carolyn, Carolyn, take that, although, you know, if we're going to get into litigation over this, I don't want to get into a giant public.
It's not litigation. It's a question about dates. That someone could appeal.
I know that.
It's a simple question.
It, it, I mean, the, the deadline for appeal is twenty days. What I, I have, I don't know for certain the date. That this was actually filed with the town clerk's office.
December, December twelfth.
So you say, I'm not, I'm not disputing that. I'm just saying I, I don't have that in front of me. Um. And with all due respect, Mr. Chair and to, to members of the public, we're on seventy Black Horse Lane. We are not on ninety-four Black Horse Lane. And it is not my job to tell, to give legal advice to someone as to what is the deadline. If Ms. Baranowski was represented by counsel, I'm sure it was able counsel who could have told her what the deadline for filing the appeal is.
And, and that goes.
No, George, I'll agree that we're not going to go further afield. No, I, I don't, I, I don't think for the purpose of this hearing, we do have some rules. We're, we're not going to talk about potential litigation over ninety-four. In this, in the context of this hearing on seventy.
Okay. I appreciate that. So now I'll go, I'll get back to seventy Black Horse Lane. Seventy Black Horse Lane back in August, put together two, uh, two lot subdivision, which you guys denied. It came back to you guys and were there, there tonight. Now that ninety-four Black Horse Lane has a subdivision road. Seventy Black Horse Lane now has frontage. When you guys were deciding ninety-four Black Horse Lane decision. Did you take into consideration that seventy Black Horse Lane could add two to four or five new lots? And did you take that into consideration for traffic, safety, conservation, everything else?
The short answer? Uh, no, because there are two separate applications.
Um, would you put your hands down?
The two, there are two separate applications. And, and the matter of fact, I mean, I know my, myself, we tried to. Through the course of the ninety-four hearings, consider what was going to go on on the other side of the street. And, and Adam assiduously tried to keep us from considering that and focus solely on what the project proposal was for ninety-four.
When you say Adam, when you say Adam, you mean, you mean Adam Brodsky, the lawyer? Excuse me. When you say Adam, when you say Adam, you mean Adam Brodsky?
Attorney.
Was he the lawyer? Was he the lawyer for both ninety-four and now seventy?
Yeah.
And is that a conflict of interest?
Well, that's for him to resolve, but.
What do you mean him? Like, we're, we're trying to protect.
Conflicts of interest are issues between. The, the lawyer in his own head and his own conscience and between him and his clients. It's not something for us here on the board or for rebuttors for that matter to, to deal with. I know, but I think I made a true statement is that when we tried to bring up the implications of the development on the other side, which is seventy. You know, eighty and ninety, Black Horse Lane. You know, Attorney Brodsky would say you were focused just on ninety-four and the lots that it's proposing. I mean, but I don't think it. It was divorced from our heads as members of the planning board, certainly not mine. But legally, we had two separate applications with two separate properties with two separate owners. And there's only so much we can, we can't just meld things together because it's convenient for everybody to meld things together. We just legally can't do that.
So I have one last question. Again, when you promoted me. I lost you for a minute or two. I I'm not sure that someone asked the question. Before you tonight, seventy Black Horse Lane is asking for to subdivide their seventy Black Horse Lane into two lots. Is that correct?
Correct.
Can, now, now that they have legal frontage, because of your decision on ninety-four. My looking at it is that they can further subdivide that because of the fifty-foot frontage, which. Mr. Chairman, I know you, you and I share the same opinion about that issue, but now they can go back and further, further subdivide it. Is there a way? Tonight, when they're in front of you, that you can say, yes, we will grant you these two subdivisions. But you cannot further subdivide it, which was what exactly you gave to ninety-four Black Horse Lane. You told them they could never. Can never subdivide. So can you? Can you, can you just tell seventy Black Horse Lane, they can have these two lots, but no further lots? The same way you did to ninety-four.
Carolyn, I'm gonna give you that answer, but let me first say the first thing. When this A and R came before us. And that we're dealing with the A and R as it came before us, they had to have frontage. They couldn't do frontage on this little inadequate lane. That's why we denied them. All right, now they do. Okay, but. I, the the A and R process and the subdivision process are two different animals, and I think Carolyn will tell you that we can't condition this. And she says we can, then maybe we have to blow all this up, but I I don't think that we're entitled to do that in the A and R process.
No, Mr. Chair, in in the A and R process, all the board is being asked to do is endorse this plan. Because the lots shown have zoning compliant frontage and they have access on a way. That is all you look at. There's little case law out there on the types of conditions you can impose on an A and R plan. And those are typically things like saying, the lot that's being created is not a buildable lot, like you just saw on King Street. Where parcel A and parcel B is a land swap. Neither of those are buildable lots by themselves. They're just. Each conveying four hundred and twenty-two square feet to each other. If you look at the legend on the plan, it says that parcels A and B. The parcels being swapped are not buildable lots on their own. So that would be one type. Another type of of condition that the courts have recognized on an A and R plan is if the purpose for the A and R. Is just because a neighbor is going to, say, convey a parcel, a sliver of land to another neighbor. And that parcel of land is not, again, not buildable, may not even be zoning compliant. Those are the only conditions that the court has recognized as being permissible on an A and R plan. And in my opinion, if we went so far as to say there shall be no further subdivision of the lot. Um, I would, number one, expect an appeal. And number two, I would think that the likelihood of us winning that appeal. Would be slim, particularly if that lot could show that it is capable. Of supporting more house lots that would comply with zoning.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question, George?
It it does, but I I would like the planning board, again, because you've done this in the last couple of meetings. To publicly acknowledge that you, there was a mistake made to grant seventy. The right to build eighty and ninety Black Horse Lane. They had no legal frontage. That was a mistake. You have publicly said it. I'd like to say it again tonight, because as I understand it, the butters to the project would have appealed. Ninety-four Black Horse Lane, but they were told yesterday that the appeal period ran out, which was not true. It actually ran out tomorrow night. So I would just like public, I do, I would like the planning board to acknowledge that there was a mistake made. On eighty and ninety Black Horse Lane, and that you guys are trying to figure out how to solve this. But all it's doing is it's creating much more issues for the residents of Black Horse Lane. And for my, and I don't live there. My issue is the fact that there's much more development being created along the Gulf River. And the planning board has not been up to speed in terms of what they shouldn't should be doing. So. I appreciate the fact, Mr. Chairman, that you're trying to solve this, and you and I have agreed. Numerous times in the past on how to change it, and you you've done a great job in terms of getting the zoning board changed. But I don't think ignoring the residents of Black Horse Lane to get this done. Is in the best interest of their whole town.
That's, that's an unfair, I I will say that that's an unfair statement, that we're ignoring. The residents of Black Horse Lane, and I've had conversations with a number of them about this whole thing.
You could have approved the common driveway, you could have approved the common driveway, or you could have.
George, we're not gonna reopen, George, we're not gonna reopen that argument, and and by all means, if you want my seat. Run for office, you can have it, okay? And and I'll be.
You know, I think that's a fair statement. I would recommend George consider. A seat on this board because he has some really far-reaching ideas on things. And there's a lot to accomplish going forward when we can use someone with his thinking through these issues. And I say that with sincerity.
Yeah, I'm not gonna get into what I would normally say, but I. Look, you know, as far as eighty and ninety, my understanding is where. Any mistake was made in the previous A and R for seventy. I don't, I'm not speaking to eighty and ninety. And how they were developed. But if they were based on a decision that, that. The existing private way portion was adequate. Yes, we changed our mind on that. From the decision that the board, different members made five, six years ago. Um, now, you know. Fortuitous for the owners of seventy, eighty, and ninety, they are getting a better road, a subdivision road coming into their area, and they're allowed to take advantage of that. That's just a fact of life, but.
Hey, I was chairing that first meeting, and I will say to to George's answer. The engineer of record who did the A and R for seventy, eighty, ninety, made a mistake. Misrepresenting that Black Horse Lane extended from Summer Street all the way to the back, back portion of these lots. Becoming twelve feet in width somewhere in the middle of a public portion. But the public, the public way and private way were not differentiated. Like they were on the Merrill plans. The Merrill engineers did a good job. The previous engineer misrepresented the public and private portions of those roads. On the information, the planning board didn't make a mistake, but the information was bad.
Sometimes developers misrepresent information, gee whiz, you know, so I mean, was the board a victim of that? Maybe so, so be it.
Yeah.
But, you know, now. The the fundamental.
There you go. Can we move on to?
Point of order, we're talking over one another. Please be civil.
All right, first of all, I'm gonna just look at a few. Looking at a few more comments. Bernadette, I get your comment. It's just been made, the same point has been made that we should have considered this together. We did what we could legally do. On that respect. Somebody says else, Ken and Charisse, I don't know the last name. We went to appeal seventy Black Horse, now it's ninety-four Black Horse. I don't know what advice people were given. People, if they came up to appeal and had counsel, I'll stand by what our town council just said that they, you know. The council could have advised them and should have advised them. If something else went wrong. You know, I I can't speak to it. I don't know what was said and 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 what everybody knew, but if they had counsel. Um, to advise them, then, you know, appeals could have been filed. We're not discussing ninety-four anymore in a deal with the connection with this. Adam, I'm gonna, I don't want to prolong this forever. Is there a traffic study for proposed houses? There was a traffic study for ninety-four. Is there a traffic study for proposed houses? No, there is not, sir. This is an A and R. It is not about the construction of houses. It is about the division of lots. And two issues. Do they have frontage and do they have an adequate access or a way to be on? Those are the sole issues we can discuss in an A and R. There are limits and exceptions and all kinds of quirks of Massachusetts zoning law, and A and Rs are one of them. And we are very limited into what we, what we can do here with that. All right. The board, what would you like to do going forward here? Are you prepared to? Adam, is it really critical? I don't want to keep stirring up the pot.
Chair Callan, I just want to say that I scrupulously comply with my ethical obligations. Under the rules of professional conduct and have no conflicts of interest, and the board should understand that. Thank you.
Understand you need to say that, that's fine. I, you know. That's not really an issue here for us to come, that would enter into our decision. Anyway. Board, are we prepared to go forward on this?
Please focus on the the mic.
A motion to endorse the A and R plan and accept the settlement agreement.
Second that.
I guess it was my motion then. All right. Okay, any further discussion amongst the members of the board? All right, hearing none, I'll take a little call vote.
Do we have to close the public comment or anything on this ahead of us voting?
I I don't see that anybody else in the public had, I mean, we were up to. Double-digit Q and As at one point. I don't see anything else. Again, if the public. All right, I just saw a hand flash up and then it went away, so. Before we take the vote, if the public has any other comment that pertains simply to this question of seventy Black Horse Lane, please. George?
Shall we take a vote?
No, I'm glad I'm glad I'm. Last, last point, George.
Is there a number of times I can only have a last point? I understand, according to Ms. Murray, that you cannot. Regulate this application to not further subdivide. But you did do that for ninety-four. So I don't understand the difference. Why could you do that for ninety-four? And I'm just, it's an honest question. I understand why I saw the ninety-four decision and said you can't further subdivide. I don't understand why you can't.
That was, that was a subdivision control law decision, application that allows us greater latitude in setting conditions. And as Attorney Murray just explained. There is no established court precedence for how far you can go with conditions on an A and R. It's a different process because the A and R is not involved with the actual development. It's simply. A subdivision of two lots if they have adequate frontage and adequate a way to access those lots.
Okay, so I appreciate that.
Limited issues, very limited issues.
I, so I appreciate that. So for my, for my colleagues that live on Black Horse Lane. Who had been talking about appealing and everything else. Now that seventy has frontage and you, and you're, because. You're making the decision tonight because ninety-four, you gave ninety-four a subdivision. And that gives seventy Black Horse Lane frontage. I just want to be clear, that's what, that's what your decision is tonight. Now that ninety-four has a subdivision road, that gives seventy Black Horse Lane frontage. Is that just, is that correct?
And that, and that would happen anywhere in town if we approve a subdivision road. And a lot that did not have legal access before it now gets the benefit of it, of somebody else's subdivision. That, that, that can, that can happen.
No, I just, I, Mr. Chairman, I just want to be clear because we've, we've had discussions with it, with the butters about that. And I just want the butters to be clear that now that ninety-four has been approved, seventy now has legal frontage. Correct?
Yes, it does.
Okay, that's all I, I just was trying to clarify.
Actually, seventy itself has legal frontage on Black Horse Lane, on the public portion, if I'm not mistaken, so.
Only for itself, not for further subdivision. All right, thank you very much.
How can a vote in this be taken when it's directly dependent on the approval of ninety-four? Well, again. That that, that is a risk that the, these current owners are going to take. Because they do not get to build a new house or occupy a new house. Until ninety-four is is settled and that we're going to build. And then Ms. Baronowski, I really hope you will not allow for any additional development on Black Horse Lane. It's a beautiful part of Boston is being ruined by these terrible decisions. So I I I agree with you, but I I resent the the implication that these are terrible decisions. We're deciding these things within state law and the town bylaw, which. Again, for whatever reason, nineteen sixty-nine, the town totally changed direction on the pattern of development in this town. And this is what the result of it is. It's taken fifty years, but here it is. All right, we have a motion, a motion that's been seconded. We're ready to vote. Amy, is there anything you need to add to it?
Uh, yes, I'd like you to clarify very precisely what the ability is. Of the owner of seventy Black Horse Lane. With regard to the condition that you're setting regarding. Um, the sequencing of the development of the lots. And I want it to be really precise.
What do you mean?
Well, you're you're saying that seventy Black Horse Lane now will have the ability to build one structure. And then it has the ability to rehabilitate a second structure.
Seventy Black Horse Lane has a structure. It has an existing house.
That it it has it, that's one structure, and that they have a second structure that that we've been discussing.
Correct.
And you, and we've referred to it several times as being rehabilitatable. I want to have a a a much greater specificity as to what you're saying about the conditions. When and 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 of what kind that seventy Black Horse Lane now will be facing.
The board's endorsement.
A lot of different words.
I'm reading from the settlement agreement. The board's endorsement of the A and R plan is subject to the condition that no occupancy, no occupancy certificate. Shall be issued for any new house to be built on any lot shown in A and R plan until the binder course has been applied to the private portion. Of Black Horse Lane, about eighty-seven Black Horse Lane, and claims agrees to the imposition of the condition. Okay, so. Until the road is ready, they can't be occupied. Okay? I don't know how much more clear that can be.
There's been a lot of words that have been used as analogs, and they're not. So that's why I'm asking for clarification.
That your understanding too, Carolyn?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair.
Lynn Baronowski, please let the neighborhood know how we can support you to change, update the bylaws around zoning to them so there are more reasons. Okay, well. The bylaw committee is meeting next Monday. The bylaw committee is going to have a forum at the end of this month. To run by some ideas for what we're bringing forward to Springtown meeting. Of course, it's subject to the bylaw committee. Actually wanting to bring these forward. I certainly have ideas, but. You know, the other thing about earlier tonight, we, and Attorney Murray explained this. Is that a lot of times when you talk about zoning changes, developers come in. And they, they do what's called a zoning freeze, which another ridiculous thing that Massachusetts zoning law allows. And we just saw an example of it, a freeze that was done on zoning. With no intention to build what the original application for was just to get the freeze. So, you know. The the risk of our zoning bylaw process is the force will be out of the barn, everybody will know it, and we can do absolutely zero. If other developers, I won't put any adjective in front of the word developers, decides to do something else on Black Horse Lane. Or any other part of town to beat any zoning changes we might propose, so. You you you, you all have to understand that Massachusetts zoning law, again, is not a development stopping exercise. It is a development conditioning exercise, and it's full of loopholes. And developers in this community and plenty of others take full advantage of them every time they can, but. You know, again, we made decisions sixty-some-odd years ago, and he he here's the consequence of it, so. I I I just urge, you know. I, I, I just, you know, the zoning bylaw committee meets twice a month, and yet, in two and a half, three years, that any members of the public attend our Zoom meetings, we've attended forums, but even then, we get twenty, thirty people.
Hey, Tom, do we have a motion in a second?
Yes, I know, I just, I'm answering Ms. Baronowski's question. I urge the public to get involved. Yes, absolutely, and this is, this is the poster child for getting involved. That being said, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion? Roll call vote.
Claude Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmarden, aye.
Kevin Hine, aye.
Andrew Hobbs, an aye.
Thank you all for your attention. Thank you, the members of the public, for participating and being actively engaged. I really do appreciate that. Thank you, Carolyn, Ms. Brodsky, and with that, we, we are concluding that our agenda. I do not believe we have any minutes tonight to approve, no.
Next meeting is the seventeenth.
Next meeting is the seventeenth. Bylaw committee is meeting Monday, the eighth. The bylaw committee is holding a public forum on Wednesday, the tenth. But that one is solely focused on the so-called housing choice legislation and what our proposal for town meeting to implement that legislation will be. I've already gotten comments on Coras at one, four, three, that this is horrible, this is horrible, but it's the state's law, it's the state's mandate, you do have to comply. But I would urge people, it's gonna be held at Wilkett Commons at six o'clock on Wednesday. I would urge people to participate in that. And then we will announce a forum later January, maybe February, about what other proposals will be before the Springtown meeting. Thank you for, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Amy, second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Alright, all in favor of adjourning, roll call.
I.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Glassmarden, aye.
Kevin Hine, aye.
Andrew Hobbs, an aye.
Good night, everyone.
Alright, thank you. See you on the seventeenth.
Good night, Adam.
Night.
Bye-bye.